Megan, do we have anybody?
The judge has a comment.
Okay, very good.
Do you find his name, Megan?
I see the judge there, ready to-
It's under, it's under Ellis, there you go. Judge, you're unmuted.
Okay, good afternoon. City Council, Eric, how are you all today?
We're doing good.
Everybody, Mayor. Hey, I just wanted to give a, give a quick, a quick comment related to the, some of the orders that we've, both the county and the city have put in place. And reminded everybody that as things change at the state, at the state level, obviously, we have to abide by the governor and, you know, that's just, I don't want to give the choir here. But also, just to raise awareness of what's happened in the past, I mean, just in the past eight, 16 hours related to some of the things that are happening across the state. With some of the other orders that, that are in existence throughout the state, both at the county and municipal level. And how now, it seems like more and more, things are being challenged, you know, in the court. As y'all know, I have a, a plenty lawsuit, you know, on myself in Brucia County. By one of our hotel motel owners. But it seems like as, as more time progresses, it is getting tougher and tougher for the local folks to hold, hold down the fort. As far as what the local expectations are with, as far as ordinances and, and also the, you know, closures of businesses and hotels. So I just, I'd like to just make a comment up to, to proceed, I think we both, and all of us need to proceed with caution. As far as what it is that we're going to be putting in place throughout the next, you know, a couple of weeks. We have our, our current order is through next Fri-, uh, next Thursday, the 30th of April. And I'm, uh, we're gonna be visiting with Dr. Escobar on Tuesday and continue dialogue with the rest of the team. To see what we do from that point forward, but I'm just, uh, just, the only comment is that we need to proceed with caution. Because it does seem like more and more folks are becoming more hypersensitive about what we're doing. And I just think we need to be very careful with the actions that we take this afternoon and even throughout the next week or two. Because it's, it's gonna, we're on the radar, folks. That, that's my big, that's my biggest thing. Um, and that's it. If anybody has any questions for me, I'm here, and I know this is not my show, it's, you know, it's Mayor's turn. And just to remind the Mayor that at this point, that he and I, as the, uh, the mayor of the, of the city of Alpine and the, uh, drive down. Under current, under these current conditions, we're kind of in charge of what we do and don't do as far as, uh, particular relations to orders and whatnot. So just real, real general overview. Thank y'all for allowing us time to speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge.
Mayor, I don't think there's any other comments.
Okay.
Ronnie Dotson has a comment.
Okay. Sheriff?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm Sheriff Ronnie Dotson. As you see, uh, my wife cut my hair because I can't get it far. And I did find my, my half inch, my inch shear yesterday, but she used the quarter inch, so you're the first one to see me without my hat.
Looks good, Ronnie.
Anyway, I just wanted to say this morning, there was a lot of calls to our office in reference to, and a lot of people got scared. Uh, they were threatened with certain jail and stuff and fines. And it was under understanding yesterday, we did call the city offices, Steve Houston, if we could get a copy of the order. And the young, the person at the, that talked to us said that, that the order hadn't been signed yet. And that it was gonna, they were gonna wait till today. So I just really want to clear up that confusion because, you know, we did, I talked to one of our best businessmen in town. And y'all, I don't want to mention his name, but he owns True Value. And he was pretty, I mean, he was visibly worried that something bad might happen to him if, if he didn't. Make people wear a mask or if he kicked somebody out of the store with a mask. And, and I'm pretty much ensuring those folks that, you know, we're not gonna put them in jail for not wearing a mask. And, and I'm hoping that the city council today will look at it as a voluntary and, and you can even tell them as much that you highly, highly, highly recommend it. But I still think the people still make, make their choice. And I know y'all can't comment back, but that's just what I want to say about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff. Anyone else?
City manager, we have anybody on cue?
Uh, no, there's nobody else in queue.
Okay, then, let's go ahead and proceed with the meeting. We'll move, there's, we don't have any presentations today. And we don't have any city mayor, uh, city attorney report or city manager, okay? Or city staff updates. So, and we have no public hearings either. And on the consent agenda, we have none also. And we'll move over to item number eight, information or discussion items. Is Dr. Escobar on, online?
Yes. Dr. Escobar's on. Megan, can you, there's the doctor.
Yep, I'm here.
Okay.
So, Mayor, on this particular agenda item. My idea was to bring Dr. Escobar on. I know we met Tuesday. Uh, but if there was any adjustments or changes. That she has tracked this week, I know she sent out an email, I believe it was yesterday, relative to the impacts of, of, that occurred in Sweden. But if there's anything else specific to the state of Texas or tri-county area that you can share with us today, Acta, that would be great.
Yeah, I can do that. Um, I'm, I'm actually gonna, I can share some data to kind of give us an update of where we are as of today. I updated all of it about an hour ago, so it's as updated as possible. Um, and regardless of what happens at the end of this meeting, I think it's information that everybody should know. So I'm, if you're okay with it, I'm gonna screen share on my side.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Can y'all see my screen?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So, um, this is where we are as of today, actually about an hour ago. I forgot to update the date and the time for when I last updated it, but I updated everything else. So, um, as of today, we are still at zero cases in the tri-county area. We have done 40 tests in the tri-county area. It puts our test rate out of every thousand people in the tri-county area at 2.2. So we've tested 2.2 people out of every thousand. Um, if you compare that to Texas, Texas had, has tested about four times that, so about 8.4 people out of every thousand. And the US is at 15.2 people per every thousand people. So the rate of testing in Texas is about half of the US. And then we're doing about 25% of Texas. Of course, a lot of the areas in Texas that are doing a lot of testing are Houston, Dallas, a lot of the urban areas, just because they already have a lot of known cases. So, um, at, we're at 25% with zero cases, but the testing could always be improved. Um, I know that there are some mobile testing sites that are coming through our area this weekend. Um, and one of the big concerns that people have had is, you know, um, what if we have cases of COVID that are just milder? And they don't qualify for testing through the hospital because they don't, they're not severely ill, they're not hospitalized, things like that. So how can I get tested if I just have mild symptoms? And those mobile testing units that are coming through town are gonna be the, the kind of. The way to go for some of those folks who may have active infections right now. Remember that they're doing PCR testing that looks for the genetic material of COVID. So if you had COVID three weeks ago, your PCR test is probably gonna be negative. But if you have it right now, um, and you feel like you might have a mild case, that testing is gonna be helpful. And that'll also boost our number of case counts in the tri-county area for the testing side from 2.2. It'll actually take us into the couple hundreds. So, um, it'll, if we get, you know, a robust amount of testing done, then it's gonna get us. Close to. About 15 tests per a thousand people. If we can get a good amount of tests when they come in through this area. So that would put us right on track with the rest of the country. And that would give us a much better idea of if we have COVID in our area or not. Because right now, we are limited with who we can test with the resources we have.
Well, Acta Rick Stevens, on, on that point, thanks for raising that, because I was gonna, one of the questions I asked. So the good is, sounds like there's gonna be good volume opportunity for the mobile test. How long will it take to get the results back from that? Is that like instant? Uh, or is it, you know, seven to 10 days?
Yeah, so, uh, they are, um, they're gonna do, it's not gonna be instantaneous results. It's a swab that still has to get sent off to the lab, just like the ones that we've been doing. Um, they're hoping the turnaround time is gonna be about seven to 10 days, which puts the results sometime over the weekend or the following kind of Monday-ish timeframe. So, um, we're hoping for sooner, but I think we're gonna get results about a week after everything, after everything happens this weekend. So I think, yeah. And then we also need to, yeah, so early May. Um, I do think we also need to remember that even if we get results, whether they're all negative or we even get a couple positives. I think that will change how we view the next couple of weeks after we get all the results in. You know, if we've tested 300 people and they're all negative, then that tells us something. If we test 300 people and, you know, 10 or 12 come up positive, then that tells us something different. And so that may change the plans we make, you know, after we get the results in. And so, um, I'm, I'm, I talked to the El Paso lab and they're, they're hoping early next week is when we'll get lab results in, that, you know, and hopefully sooner than that. But then, we also need some time to figure out what's gonna happen based on those results. Yep.
Okay. From 9 to 5, and we're at?
So tomorrow's, for Alpine's location, it's at the, our emergency response center. It's right next to the Sunshine House across Second Street. It's kind of diagonal from that Second Street porters by the railroad tracks. Um, so that's where it's gonna be. You can only go by appointment only. And so you have to call the number, get an appointment. The qualifications for symptoms to get an appointment are not very robust. So fatigue is one, uh, body aches and joint pain is another, nausea, vomiting, diarrhea is another, sore throat is another. Congestion, headache, so you're not, these are more mild symptoms that we see less frequently with COVID, but these may be cases that we're missing. So it's not, you know, I wish we had more than just one day of testing in our area, but that's what we have. And I think people should take advantage of that.
Okay, do you have a number that, that they can call?
Yes, I do. Let me pull it up.
Yeah, we have that on the, on the front website.
Okay, very good.
The flyers out there.
Yeah, it's a, it's an Austin number, it's like-
512, yeah.
Yeah, it's a 512, here it is, 883-2400. Um, you get routed to like a call center, so you need to wait a little bit till your number's up and then they'll kind of go through everything with you, so.
Okay.
All right.
Dr. Escobar?
Yes.
This is Shimon. Can you give us just a little briefing on what the, the tests, the clinical tests can take? What, what are they going to do? They will get the swab, put it in your nose?
Yeah.
And what results are, are, are the outcome, in your opinion?
Yeah, so there, uh, this test is called a RT PCR test. So what it does is, when you first show up to the location, they'll, um, they will have you put your driver's license or some sort of ID, picture ID against your window. And so they can verify that, that's, you know, that's the person that's driving. They would want, they don't want anybody else in the car with you, they don't want any pets in the car. Um, it's just you, and the vehicle has to be an enclosed vehicle, so not a convertible, not an open-air Jeep, has to be enclosed. And then they first stop you at the check-in process, they verify your, your ID and yourself. And then you drive forward and then you go to the next kind of checkpoint, and that one is where they swab you. And they have, it looks like a really long Q-tip, but the, the head of the Q-tip is really thin, almost like a cone. And they put it up your nose to the back of your nose where your nose meets your throat. Um, and they swab and they pull it out. So the whole process takes less than five seconds, but it is really uncomfortable. It doesn't hurt, it just is uncomfortable. Um, if you've ever done like a sinus rinse or something, that's the, that's the feeling you get. There's something all the way in the back of your throat. So you do that, um, and then they will label the swab with your name and, and everything. And then they're gonna collect all the swabs for the whole day. And then at the end, from what I've been told, it's gonna be a DPS employee who then drives couriers all of those lab samples to the lab in El Paso. So, and then El Paso's gonna be the lab that runs it. And then when we get results, which is about seven to 10 days later. Then what, what's gonna happen is the regional health authority in El Paso, so as the Brucer County local health authority, she's, she's my supervisor. She's going to get all the results. If you have a negative test, you will get a text message letting you know you have a negative test. If you have a positive test, then she will call you personally as a physician, she is a physician. She will also then notify your county of residence judge. So if you're a Fort Davis person and you drove down to Alpine to get your test done, then they'll notify Judge Sproul in, in Fort Da-, in Jeff Davis County. So it's always by the county of residence, it's not where, the county that you got your test in.
Hey, hey, Acta, how many people do they think they can test per, on that day?
Their goal is 150 tests per location.
Okay.
Yeah, and last, um, I got a text message from a friend about an hour ago saying she called for an appointment and they gave her a 12 o'clock appointment. So if they're taking appointments all the way till 5, you know, and if, I don't know if that was the next available, it sounds like they have plenty of openings still. So. For those of you who may be worried that they may have COVID or been exposed to COVID at some point, if you've recently traveled or anything like that, this is your chance to, to get tested.
And as one who used the system online, I always tend to try things out, as simple as Acta described. It's a simple 13 to 14 point questionnaire. You fill in the information, they will assign you appointment. I bailed out because I didn't want to consume someone's appointment. But it is easy to use and you can do it online in the privacy of your home.
Yeah, um, and they are really trying to advocate for healthcare workers and first responders to get tested. If anyone has exposure in the middle of a shelter in place ordinance, it's gonna be them. You know, we're still are coming in contact with a lot of people throughout our day. So, um, if any of those folks have symptoms, they definitely would like for them to get tested. Because if anyone's gonna be positive in our area, you know, it's gonna be, it's gonna be us, so. All right, I'm gonna move on to the next slide. So this is our updated Texas map. You should have seen this before, that's our Texas Health Department map. And it looks at, um, there's dots across different counties, across the 254 counties in Texas. You can see in the top right-hand corner, 204 of the 254 counties, um, have cases. So, um, that's kind of increasing. I'm gonna back up just a second, someone asked if there's an age limitation for testing. They said they are not gonna test minors, so anybody 18 and over can get tested for the testing over the weekend. There was a quick question on the chat. Um, okay, so 204 of the 254 counties have had cases now. And you can see, the bigger the blue dot on our Texas map, the more COVID cases they have. And I'm just extrapolating some data from the numbers we have so far. And I know there's a lot of numbers on this graph, so I'm kind of putting all that up in perspective up above in my own text. So, so far, they've run 242,547 tests in the state of Texas. And of all those tests, we've had 22,800 positive tests, okay? So that's a 9.4% rate of positivity, okay? So if you extrapolate that to Texas population, under our current strict shelter in place, where people are not really coming, you know, interacting with each other very much. If 9.4% of the current Texas population, um, that comes out to 2.7 million people. That can potentially, um, have positive COVID-19 tests. Um, the current hospitalization rate, so if you look at this 16, 1,674 people that are currently in the hospital, out of these 22,000 cases. That's a 7.3% hospitalization rate. So out of the 2.7 million people in Texas that could test positive, about 200,000 people are gonna get hospitalized. That's seven times the number of hospital beds we have in the state. And of those 200,000, 11.5% of those are gonna require an ICU. And that's 10 times the number of ICU beds we have available. And that's with having pretty strict shelter in place ordinances across most of the state. Those are the numbers that we're looking at. So we have to remember that as we look at how we interact with each other, we look at reopening, we look at people interacting with each other more, those numbers are gonna go up. So of course, we're not expecting all those people to get sick all at the same time. But every hospital bed that's occupied by a COVID-19 patient, they're usually utilizing that bed for at least three weeks. So that bed is out of commission for three weeks. This is not, you know, a patient comes in, 24 hours later, they're home. So the length of the hospitalization is really gonna lock up a lot of hospital resources for a while. So, we want, we, we don't expect, we want to slow the spread so that we can take care of all these patients and they don't come in all at once. So just something to, to remember based on the data we have. Okay. Um, next one, this is a little blurry because I tried to blow up the entire graph, but you, hopefully, some of y'all have seen this before. This is our kind of curve, this is the curve that will, that should start going down at some point. So the orange bars up top are the number of active cases of COVID. So these are people under observation for COVID. They could be in the hospital, they could be at home, but these are the people with active infections. The bars underneath, on the bottom, the blue bars, and then there's a little sliver of a gray bar underneath each blue bar, those are cases that are closed. So those people are no longer under observation for COVID. So these are people that either recovered, and that's why they're no longer under observation, or they have died. And that's why they're no longer under observation. But there's open cases and closed cases of COVID. What we really want to see is, we want to start seeing more and more people recovering from COVID. And less people bringing in new cases of COVID. So the number of people should move from the active cases down into the recovered cases. And that's gonna let those orange bars start trending down. We haven't started seeing that downward trend yet. You can see we slowed the rate of cases that we're getting across the country, but we haven't started going down yet. And you can see there's two bars with, with red arrows on them. We can see there were little teeny dips in those orange bars for one day, and then we went right back up the next day. And then another little dip, and we went right back up the next day. So we don't have a trend of going downward yet. You know, we had little hopeful days, but then we, we couldn't stick with it. And so we still are not on the downward trend of cases as a state. Oh, hold on, okay. This is something that I do think is important, it's a little bit technical, but I want you to bear with me. I touched on this before, but there are some projections about what may happen with COVID-19 after this big hump. And I just, I want y'all to keep this in mind, just because it affects how we think about the short term and long term, okay? So, um, this was, um, some data published in Science Magazine, it's actually a journal, it's a really prestigious journal. And this data's been really well-vetted. It says that we projected that our current, our recurrent wintertime outbreaks of SARS-CoV-2 will probably occur after the initial most severe pandemic wave. Absent other interventions, a key metric for the success of social distancing is whether critical care capacities are exceeded. To avoid this prolonged or intermittent social distancing may be necessary into 2022. And the reason I bring this up is, this is not a one and done thing. Until we have medications that help, until we find a vaccine, um, you know, we may have to kind of intermittently do something where we restrict our, our social activities. And then we slowly open up and when, then we start seeing an increase in cases and we have to tighten back down again. So, I know this is a really busy graph chart, but bear with me, because there's some really important information I need you all to, to see. So, when you are looking at the shaded purple rectangles, those are times that we, we may need to socially distance. And remember, these are mathematical models, this is obviously not real life. Um, but based on the data we have on hand, this is what they're projecting. So you can see that all of these lines start at, at January of 2020 on the left-hand side. And then they go all the way across to July of 2022. And what's happening is the blue lines that, or sorry, the black lines that go up, those are COVID cases. So as COVID cases start increasing, you can see that then social distancing starts getting put into place. And the red line is the number of cases in our ICU. And then as we control our cases and the cases start dropping, then after they hit kind of a low critical point, then we can start reopening up again. And then we go back up, and then we go back down. And so this has a couple different predictions in place because we don't know how COVID is going to behave. And so it's gonna be really important to keep that in mind as we go into the summer months. So, these, um, what's gonna happen is with A, their projection with A across the, the top part is, this is if COVID-19 is not seasonal. So let's say, it doesn't matter if it's winter or summer, you're gonna see the same amount of COVID cases. So this is not like the flu, right? We're assuming, we're making some assumptions about it because we haven't hit our true summer months yet. So what is COVID-19 gonna do in the summer? Well, let's assume it doesn't do anything different than what it, what it's doing in the winter, and it's gonna do the same across the board. So it's saying that the cases are gonna be the same no matter what time of the year it is. So with our current US ICU capacity, this is what those curves are gonna look like. You're gonna go up, and then once you kind of peek across the dashed horizontal line up top. Um, you kind of went beyond our ICU capacity, so you gotta start a lot, you know, a shutdown and kind of get everybody sheltering in place. You see the cases drop, and then you can open back up again, but you're gonna see that rise again, so you shut down again. C, um, underneath, so we're gonna skip B for just a second. C also looks at COVID-19 not being seasonal, but this is with double healthcare capacity. So if you can double the ICU beds, double the hospital beds we have in our, in our, in the US, then we can get, get to a higher caseload before we go into a shelter in place. So you can see that the number of purple bars in A and C are, C is a lot less. Because if we have a bigger hospital capacity, we can go longer before we have to shelter in place. B and D are looking at COVID-19 as being seasonal. So there's bigger cases in the winter, there's less cases in the summer. We don't know what COVID-19's gonna do until we hit the summer, but they're assuming, so let's say, let's say it's more like, uh, kind of like the flu where we see more cases in the winter. And colder weather is what it likes. So B is with it being seasonal and having our current healthcare capacity. D is being seasonal with a, with double the healthcare capacity. And ideally, obviously, D is what we want, is, you know, we don't want to go to shelter in place very much. We want to minimize the amount of time we have to do this again, this is not fun for anybody. Um, and so what does that look like? So, the biggest thing is, no matter what model we're looking at, we're still looking at having surges in our COVID cases, um, in the future. So I think we need to really remember that this is probably not just one and done. Um, I think we're gonna have more cases in the future and more surges of cases in the future. All right. Here's some data on masks, I, I know that that's the topic of discussion right now, so I just wanted to show some data. So, um, these are, these are some, I'm gonna go through these pretty quickly, but these are some assessments of masks and how effective or ineffective they are. So, um, this one shows, um, the assessment of how, um, effective a mask is, so how good or bad a mask is. And then how many people may follow the mask rule. And that looks at how many hospitalizations for COVID specifically that would lead to. So if you look at this top left-hand corner graph, what that's doing is, that's looking at a mask that only blocks like 25% of things, okay? So not a very effective mask, but it's something. And what you can see is if nobody uses these masks, this is, your, the blue curve is how many people are gonna get hospitalized. If 10% of people use this mask, even though it's not a great mask, you can see that the number of hospitalized patients drops a little bit. And if 25% of people are compliant, then it drops the curve a little bit more. If 50% of people are compliant, again, drops it all the way down to 75% compliance. So the more people that use masks, the better it's going to, um, improve our hospitalization rate for COVID, okay? And so there's a lot of data out there about that. This, there's two, on this one, the top one, there's a study they did on cloth masks to protect healthcare providers. So this is in a medical setting. This one found that cloth material is somewhat efficacious in filtering particulate matter and aerosols, not as good as medical masks. But remember, the whole point is, we're not looking for something, you know, we're not looking to use this in healthcare settings, we're looking on using, at using this in the community. Um, and then the bottom one says being safe versus being safer. So this one is, you know, what's the goal of masks? We're not looking for perfection, but the idea is that every layer of protection counts. So, for example, condoms are not 100% effective, right? It's actually less than 100%, but we still advise on using condoms to prevent STDs. Um, smoking, right? So we have lots of policies on no smoking in public places and stuff like that. Now, that doesn't mean we're gonna stop everybody from smoking, but it does mean that we're creating a safer environment for the majority of people. So it's not perfect, but it's better than exposure to everybody. And same thing with vaccines, vaccines are not 100% effective, but it's a- And same thing with vaccines. Vaccines are not a hundred percent effective, but it's a layer of protection. This one was an assessment of fabric masks as alternatives to standard surgical masks. So this was looking at it to filter, filter particles, but this was more comparing it to like healthcare surgical masks. So on those, it said homemade masks worn as designed always had lower particle remover removal rates than the three M masks. Those are the surgical ones. But what they found was if you actually add a layer of nylon stocking over the mask, it actually minimized the flow of air around the edges. That was a weak point of the cloth masks. And it improved the particle filtration efficiency. And the last bullet says that nylon stocking overlay that they talk about brought the particle filtration efficiency for half of the masks that they tested to above the surgical mask filtration. So there's actually ways to make homemade masks significantly more effective than even compared to some of the healthcare masks. And then this is the last one. This just talks about simple respiratory protection. So it evaluates how, how the filtration is for cloth masks and common fabric materials. So this one showed that common fabric materials can provide marginal protection against nanoparticles, including particles that are in the, in the range of like virus sized particles. So marginal protection. So anyway, that's all I have. That's what the data shows.
Okay, Dr. Edgar, thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Then we'll go ahead and we're going to move over to item number nine. And it's action items to be accompanied by a brief statement of facts, including where funds are coming from, if applicable. Action items limited to up to ten per meeting. After being called upon by Mayor or Mayor Pro Tem, citizens are required to state their names and the ward in which they reside. Priority will be given to citizens of Alpine and those who own business or property in the city. Individuals who do not live in or own business or property that city limits of Alpine will be allowed to speak at this time available. City manager.
Honorable Mayor, City Council. Item, item one is to discuss, consider and take appropriate action if needed on amending ordinance twenty twenty dash zero three dash zero six. Emergency ordinance instituting emergency measures due to a public health emergency for the city of Alpine. That had been amended Tuesday evening. And with the volume of calls and discussions that we've had. And I had sent out information earlier today to you all as well. The, the, the two things I think that are most important to contemplate this evening. One are any changes to that ordinance as, as council so seems fit. And then the second piece is based on, on what council would do. The implementation side of that. And let me clarify on the implementation side. The, one of the questions that had come up relative to the use of the masks was how do you administrate that? If there's non-compliance in a business, would you ticket the individual that's non-compliant? Or would you ticket the business? So depending on, on what council's desire is in, in taking any action on adjusting, we would then have to look at implementation. Fair enough?
Fair enough. Okay. Entertain a motion, please.
So this is Rick and I'm going to make a motion to get the dialogue going and I expect it's going to be amended somewhere along the way. But we can't have discussion amongst council and have our feelings represented unless we get a motion put on the table from a policy standpoint. So my motion will be that we continue to implement the ordinance that we amended at our last city council meeting.
You broke up at the last sir.
So I'll say it again. Yeah, there's, someone's moving around with their mics. I'm sorry about that. I'll say it again. I, I propose that city council take action to leave the ordinance that we amended at our last city council meeting as is.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion's been made and second it now will open up for discussion.
So, so I certainly have thoughts, comment, mayor, but I don't want to monopolize. So I don't know if you want to go council member to council member to get their input, but I certainly have some thoughts.
Okay, let's go, let's start with Eric. Yes, sir, city attorney.
Did y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, the essential memo regarding the legalities of ordering a that everybody wear a mask if they're in public or if they're in a, a business. And it, what it boils down to is that the city can do that if the city wants to do that. It would be legal to do that, although there's been a lot of pushback in various places in Texas. And there's been a lawsuit filed in Houston. There's been saber rattling of lawsuits in our area, although the only lawsuit right now is pending against the county judge. The, the issue that was raised, I think, is one of the most troubling issues of Eric was talking about. You know, if you, if you have twenty people in a store, do you give? And they don't have masks on, do you give everyone of them a ticket? Do you give a ticket to the store owner? Do you give twenty tickets to the store owner? You know, what if the store owner has somebody in the back room stocking and he doesn't have a mask? It's, it's, it becomes a pretty big enforcement issue or a fairness issue. And this is the first time since I've been city attorney, this time around in Alpine, that I've gotten an awful lot of comments back from people that are opposed to being, having a mandate that they have a mask. You know, some people are okay with it, but some people aren't. And I think that it's, it's really up to the council how you all want to do it. If you want to order it, you can, but based on the feedback I've gotten, there's going to be a lot of I don't know, resistance, you know, I don't know. For some reason, this has struck a chord with people. We're still trying to get through the coronavirus, but the legality is yes, you can do it, but the practical side is it's hard to enforce even if you mandate it. So y'all have to decide what you want to do.
Okay, thank you, sir. And we'll start with Maria first.
Um, I, I would like to hear what Rick has to say. I have my opinion about it, but um, I'm still, I feel like I don't, the one thing that I don't think we should do is, is penalize the businesses. I, I think that's a little bit too far, but I, I want to hear what everybody else has to say.
Okay, then let's go with Ramon.
Yes, hello, everybody. I have a, my opinion on this is is I, I received three emails and a couple of phone calls from residents at large regarding their opinions regarding not to support this ordinance. And I can, and I can see where they're coming from and sympathize. But at the same time, there are only a few. I called some people in, in my ward and basically questioned or tried to find out what they thought about the ordinance. And interestingly enough, and unfortunately, a, a lot of the people that I talked with in the ward did not even know about the ordinance for one. Although they were interested in as to why people were out in, in public wearing masks. And of course, I tried to explain that, yes, we have an ordinance, but it's basically for their safety. And second, I feel like we need further information before maybe making any amendments to the ordinance. And they should be based on the following. One, and basically what I conducted is a visual observation of people wearing masks out there when they're shopping around and then going to the, the stores that are open right now, like True Value and Porters and, and some of the other smaller grocery stores and so forth. There are people wearing masks, but it's mostly folks from what I have seen in the middle age and senior age levels. Very few children and, and kids are out there. Second of all, it, so it seems that people are worrying and, you know, being cautious and safe for themselves or families and neighbors and friends, which is good. Second of all, I think we might want to maybe hold off until we get the results of the clinic tests that are coming up. We need further data as to find out what is really going on in this area regarding the presence of COVID nineteen. And because we really don't know what's out there. And we need that information. And basically, third of all, it slipped my mind right now. We need to take a wider survey and what I would recommend is a telephonic survey from city hall to residents of all the wards to find out where they stand regarding the ordinance and also the use of masks in the public area. And this could be done or should be done at random. Where people can be called and asked whether they know about the ordinance and second, what do you think about using masks and so forth? And based on the, the returns of information, that data will also help us to assess where our residents stand or feel about the, the use of masks. And until we get that information from these three different sources, I feel that maybe we should hold off until we can make, to make an assessment on any changes to the amendment. Although, as I said at the beginning, I do feel for the people who are, who are against it. And, but it's something that we need to take action on, but we need more information. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Fitzgerald.
Yes, I, I have my mask and I was out the other day and I ran across quite a few people that were not wearing them. And I just made sure that I was stay far enough away from them. That was their privilege if they wanted to wear that or not, because we really haven't had too many cases or we haven't had any cases here in our county. So it's, it's going to be up to those people to decide.
Okay, thank you. And we'll move over to Ms. Escobar.
Oh, I've had a lot of calls, texts, and I've had people come up since yesterday. I've had both people that want them, want the mask to be mandatory and others who are very upset and don't want them. I think right now, I feel that it's, should be their choice. I'm hoping that maybe after we get some confirmation from the test that they're going to do, maybe that will give us something to make a mandatory depending on what the results are.
Right. At present, what we're trying to decide, is it going to be mandatory or not? Okay? And going back to Ramon's comment that when he called people, they didn't even think about it. This thing's been in place for over a month. Okay? And it's been in the newspaper and it's been in the radio. So, you know, people should be aware of it. Now, my take on it is that I feel that, you know, yes, you know, the comments I've gotten, what I've been reading out. And trust me, I fielded a ton of calls yesterday and again today of people that are against it. I only had one that was for it. But I feel again that we, you know, we could be infringing on people's rights on this. And until something more conclusive, you know, I think we should go ahead and, and withdraw the verbiage in, in that ordinance, leave the, the original ordinance intact. But just add that we should go ahead and, and leave it up to people's discretion. But they should also be reconnoisseur of folks that are in their age group that also have some health issues. So we need to look at all this also that, you know. Yeah, you know, we're also stepping on, on their, on their rights to have a healthy environment. So this is where folks are going to have to step up to the plate and, you know, and be respectful of that. But I think at this point in time that we should remove the verbiage mandatory and it should state that we highly recommend that people wear them. Okay? We, you know, we, we, our police department can't be patrolled in every store. We can't enforce it. We've gotten pushback from the stores. And so how are we going to enforce something that we can't, that people are not going to buy by or the, or the business community? So let's just go ahead and, and do it right. And we, we can't procrastinate on this thing. We need to move on it. We, and again, I'm going to say that we should make it where it's voluntary, but we highly recommend that people wear them for the sake of other folks.
So this is Rick, mayor. I'd, I'd like my chance to talk now.
You're next, sir.
Okay. Let me give some background and perspective. And one of the things that I liked and I thought was very good about our city council meeting we held on Tuesday was the discussion about what's our overview and intent. And frankly, it's not clear to me how many people actually read that page and a half document other than council. What the document says is what we're trying to do from an intense standpoint, in my view, is how do you balance the challenge of COVID and the implications it could have to overwhelm our health community and, and, and the health network? How do you maintain a safe environment? And how do you get businesses back open? Right now, we have, we're under tier three. And is, remind everyone what tier three is. Tier three is curfews enacted, shelter in place relative to travel, hotel motels can only, they're closed for tourism and essential emergency travelers only. Nightly reports to APD, restaurants and bars are closed, takeout only, limited entry. And retail is only essential businesses. And non-essential businesses move to a drive-through or curb only. And personal services businesses are closed. It's my opinion that one of the benefits, let me also share. And, you know, we've all done some, some research. I, I thank Dr. Escobar for talking about Science Magazine. That's actually, AAAS is a great organization that I've been involved with for many years. And they've got some great data and some great research on the part of scientists. You know, one of the elements as I look at what's gone on over time, I go back to the American Medical Association. On the fourth of March, they said no need to wear masks on the part of the general population. On the twentieth of March, they said, well, you know, we need to make sure we put social distancing in place, washing of hands and good hygiene. And on the seventeenth of April, they came out and say, hey, you know, people ought to wear masks. And the primary purpose of wearing masks is to make sure that if someone's got it, got COVID, that they don't spread it, particularly those who are asymptomatic. And those who are asymptomatic that are spread, the fact is, in Alpine, we're not going to know for at least a week from the time someone develops symptoms till the time, you know, we can identify they actually have COVID. And so from my view, I'd really like to see businesses get opened back up, including the non-essential businesses. But in my opinion, until such time as we have real data, which it sounds like we're going to begin to have in hopefully a week from Monday, so that's another ten days or longer. And we'll have a great population of three hundred, we don't know where we're at. So my proposal frankly was going to be to go to tier two if people wore masks. Now, I'd like everyone else, because I think that's the right thing to do. We open businesses, we open some of our short-term stays, people can start getting revenue going and get on with life as we work our way through this in a logical way. But, but I'll also tell you, I have gotten a bazillion phone calls on both sides of the camp. I've gone out with my own survey, as many of you know I tend to do. I go out to constituents and I'll be straightforward. These are people that I know that I ask because I know they'll give an honest opinion. I keep their name out of it. And it's been about fifty-fifty. I had a long discussion last night with, with one of my constituents who's also a good friend. And we had a great argument back and forth of pros and cons about masks. And I said, I don't get it. And we had a great argument back and forth of pros and cons about masks. And I said, I don't get it. If we're trying to open businesses, which I think is what we're after, the economy getting going again, why the pushback against masks? And the feedback was, well, it's taking away our civil liberties. I said, well, quite frankly, your civil liberties were taken away already because we closed all the hotels, all the restaurants are closed, and all the personal businesses are closed. So wouldn't it make sense to kind of give and take on both sides? Uh, to be able to, uh, to move that forward. And after a long pause, his comment was, you know, you're right, I'm gonna wear a mask anyway because I think that's the right thing to go do, but there's lots of pushback. And so my, my, my view is, hey, staying with tier three, frankly, it's no skin off my back. Uh, I've got businesses like others do, but mine are not driven by what happens with COVID from an income standpoint. Uh, those businesses continue on. Uh, but I know it's tremendously difficult for many constituents who reported to me, Rick, what's it gonna take to get the businesses open? And when I say, hey, real simple, if you wore a mask, if you could open your business tomorrow, would you agree with it? Their response across the board has been, hell yes, do it tonight, get on with it. So that's where I come across, which is why my view is, you know, go to mask and, uh, and move to tier two and start getting back in business. Uh, but what I hear is, people don't wanna do it, wanna stay with tier three, wanna take the mask off. I get it, I understand it, and I'm happy to support, uh, an amendment to that motion. In fact, why don't I make that motion right now? I'll amend my original motion to, uh, to say that we maintain tier three and take the requirement for mandatory masks off. Uh, and that way we continue on business as usual, but our hoteliers cannot open up. Our, uh, businesses cannot open up unless they're essential. And I believe we have put our city at risk. So that's the motion I've made. I'm gonna make one other comment.
Okay.
Texas, as we look at what's going on in Texas, certainly the numbers are down. But once the borders are up, and you don't have to look too far, because I have a number of people sending me the data from Mexico and OJ, those numbers are off the charts. And I do get concerned about that mask or way to help protect ourselves. So I've made the motion. I'll let someone decide if they want a second.
Is there, is there a second? Uh, can I make an, uh, can I make an additional comment on that? Just a second. Who seconded?
Lucy, raise your hand.
Did you second that?
Yes, Lucy did.
Okay, then we can have discussion.
Okay. I agree with what Councilman, uh, Stevens said about, uh, making the, um, the ordinance, uh, mandatory for the wearing of masks. Uh, I think that's the, uh, the, the good move. And, but also to imply that if somebody's not wearing a mask, that there is no penalty to be implemented. Question that comes up for me is, who should be wearing masks? Who is it meant, who are healthcare providers, as Dr. Escobar mentioned? Uh, first responders, um, CD employees, uh, folks who service, um, residents who are going shopping at their stores, are they required to wear masks? Um, and so, and that's one thing. The other thing is regarding the, um, the potential invasive, uh, phase of COVID-19 from Mexico. There is a, an extensive map, uh, that, like, the dashboard map for the state of Texas, which is also, is found on the web for the entire country of Mexico. And you will find that in the, uh, the bordering states of Coahuila and Chihuahua next to our region, the cases and the number of deaths is very, very small. And that, uh, is something you should look, we should look into. It's, it's not as dire as many people may think. Uh, so I would say keeping the opinions as to what's happening in another country uh, at bay until we get further information, but there is information out there about cases and, and people who have survived and deaths in Mexico.
Ramon, that, that's the data I've looked at. So I've actually looked at the same data you're talking about.
And, you know, some of that data also from, from Mexico and other countries, it's, a lot of it's not reported because of the isolation. Okay? Cause I've looked at it also, but, you know, so we gotta take that into consideration. Now, folks were fine with shelter in place and every, and a lot of folks are pretty much complying because I would drive around and the streets would be empty. So to, to me, folks, if you don't force them to, but tell them, look, these are the dire, these are the dire straits, we could be in dire straits if you don't do it voluntarily. I think people are more apt to do it that way. And if we get a case here, then it's gonna be a wake-up call like, whoa. You know, we hadn't had two cases because, you know, a lot of folks were wearing their mask and we had to shelter in place. But let's put this, let, on, on the citizens, you know, guys, if you, you know, we're asking you, we're urging you, you know, to wear the mask, but let's not mandate it. Let's take that out, out of the equation. I mean, I'm, I'm in, in a position where I've got two strikes against me, age and the health. Okay, yeah, it concerns me, but I'm also looking at, are we violating people's rights? And that's what I look at. Okay? Cause I've gotta look at, at everything, just same thing as you guys. And we all have our own opinions. So I say, let's amend the ordinance, leave the original ordinance in March intact. But just change the verbiage from mandatory to voluntary, but we urge, strongly urge that you folks wear these masks to, to, you know, to help your neighbor or your friend or anybody that's, that's got some kind of health issue. Okay? You know, let's, let's not be selfish about it. You know, we, we got other folks out here that also, there are the silent majority that might have the issue. But let's just make it where it's not gonna be mandatory. Okay? It's gonna be a-
Motion on the floor. Okay, the motion was put on the floor to take it away from being mandatory.
Correct.
Okay, so that is, uh, in the motion. But I will also say, and I'll make the last statement, we are continuing to keep many small businesses in Alpine closed.
Right.
That's a decision we council are making.
Okay, and, you know, here's the thing, what is Greg Abbott gonna say? About, you know, when he makes this announcement about how and which businesses are gonna be open? Because he's not gonna open all the businesses and it's gonna be on a gradual, uh, on, uh, grad, with gradual steps in how he's gonna open it. Cause he doesn't wanna open it completely. And, and I'll, and I'll tell you what, I'm very concerned here in Alpine. We don't have any cases because, you know, we were proactive. But when you start getting these people coming in from Houston, San Antonio, Austin, that are carrying the, the disease and they infect our population, then I think that's when, you know, when we have to revisit that ordinance and perhaps then make it mandatory.
It will be too late.
Yeah, well, it, yes, it would.
It will be too late. Look at Sweden. Sweden is a prime example. That's why Dr. Escobar put that on the table. They chose not to. Their decision was, we can tolerate the higher level of deaths and get back to business sooner, and that's what the data shows. So I get it, you know, that's, that's what the data shows. That's the facts.
Right, I understand that. Okay, anybody else?
I just wanna say, I, I know that this is the, the most unpopular opinion that's been popping up on the, on the screen and everything, but I still think the masks should be mandatory. I think they should be worn out in public in, in closed spaces. Maybe not at the park, but if you're going to the grocery store, I think they should be worn. Um, I think we just don't have enough information right now. Right now, we don't have any cases. Right now, everybody's healthy, um, and I think that's great. I think once we get the testing done, um, I think we'll have a better idea. I think Monday, once the governor gives his statement, I think we'll have a better idea, and that's my opinion.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead and, and, and put it to a vote then. Uh, is, there's any more discussion?
I have a, I have a question and it, it doesn't have to do with the mask, but it has to do with the ordinance. I had a question asked that if a nurse travels out of the, out of town to another place, do they have to quarantine?
I think that's what folks are doing right now. They're quarantining, uh, our Councilman Stevens, who traveled, I think, out of, to, out of state, he self-quarantined himself.
I think the point that, uh, Lucy's raising though, Mayor,
Yeah.
is I am aware of many people who are not following that.
Right, and I, I know what she's saying, but is it mandatory?
Well.
Is that your, is that your, your question, Lucy?
Are they, well, if, are they supposed to self-quarantine?
Well, that's what I'm saying, that, that, is it mandatory that they have to self-quarantine?
Yes.
That's what our ordinance says.
Yeah, okay, and that's what-
I mean, this is just because people are not understanding it, so I needed to make sure that that's out there.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, are there any more questions?
Eric, you have any additional thoughts?
Um, just to follow up on Lucy's question, um, the, uh, the city ordinance did require a 14-day quarantine if you went to a, uh, COVID-infected county. Um, that's what made it slightly different than the governor's order. The governor's order specifically contemplated other states and other cities outside of Texas. And so when we put the, the ordinance in place, um, a few weeks ago in Alpine, there was specific language in there, um, that, that really related to the governor's executive order. And the reason why we did that is we wanted to make sure we stayed in alignment with what the governor and state of Texas was doing. Um, the, um, the, the other thing that happened on this past Tuesday is when we were pulling together the levels, um, and we took level three, the ideology there was to line that up with our existing ordinance. That was why we placed ourselves at level three. Uh, but then also look at that opportunity for, uh, the businesses that were retail to be able to open for, um, the curbside pickup, uh, or delivery. And so that was designed to be in alignment with what the governor, um, had authorized today. Um, the, the ideology around the masks, which I know we, we certainly talked about heavily, was, was just really a reflection of the governor's, uh, order that had opened up the state parks. Um, and the discussion around wearing masks at state parks. Uh, so really what we've tried to do all along has been to run, um, a, as much in parallel with the governor's order. The only other thing that we really added in there was that curfew. Um, so looking at 10:00 PM to, to 5:00 AM. But, but relatively speaking, if you look at the governor's executive order, um, if you're following that, uh, the curfew really makes no difference. Because there are some folks that are going to and from work between 10:00 PM and 5:00 AM. Um, and they would be exempt from that, uh, from that curfew. Um, so that, that was the, the method in the thought process when that matrix was built.
So Eric, you- I'm sorry, there's a note, there's a, there's a note on there that says the governor, uh, has not mandated mask, uh, in state parks.
Right.
It, 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 has he or has he not?
He says- Well, he, yeah, you know, it's been interesting listening to Governor Abbott because, uh, you know, the golf courses are, are another example where, you know, he comes out with a statement about, you know, not being able to congregate in public areas. But then he comes back later and contemplates golf courses and the AG has to make an opinion, and then he has to make an opinion. And so it, it really, from a local perspective, it's been quite challenging trying to, to manage all that. And I know Rod and myself and our staff, we've been trying to work back with the AG's office, uh, as well on that. So that's, uh, that's been part of the challenge. But, but I think, you know, after further discovery in it, uh, one, one would argue that the governor didn't mandate it at a state park. Um, he, he strongly suggested it, so. Um, and it was interesting that he would strongly suggest it and then his lieutenant governor would come back and say, oh, that's draconian. It's almost like the, the two, the two gentlemen were not on, uh, the same playing field, so. Certainly that, that causes some consternation for us.
And that's what's got local governments in, in a tizzy is because you cannot get one solid response from our state or national officials. So it's pretty much left up to us to decide what is correct. Okay, so I'm gonna call for the question then. Okay? I've called for the question. We're gonna vote. Okay, all those in favor of modifying, uh, the ordinance? As Mr. Stevens said, take the mandated, uh, of wearing of masks out of there. Okay? And, uh, we'll see how the bus, and you, you correct me if I'm wrong, what you restate it so we know exactly, Rick. I don't wanna-
Oh, so, so, so thanks, Andy. It, it's, uh, to remove the mandatory requirement for masks, make it optional and, uh, recommended for levels two and level three, and that the city remain at tier three.
Okay, so does everybody understand the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor of modifying the ordinance? Raise your right hand. One, two, three, four. Four, four, to modify, to make, to remove the mandatory of the wearing of masks. Correct?
And to highly recommend that they use it, that's part of it.
Right, and to, they highly recommend to use it. And Maria, you're abstaining.
I'm gonna vote against it.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Okay, so we have four in favor of rescinding that verbiage of mandatory wearing it and leaving everything else in place.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so although, so that's the way the ordinance is gonna be. We're removing the mandatory of wearing of masks. And we're gonna follow whatever the governor's, uh, direction is. Because that's what we've done and, and we've been doing all along, is following their, their guidelines.
So, so, so Mayor, that, that was not part of what we just passed. We have an ordinance that we passed, the, the city owns, it's documented details, we made a change. We decide subsequent to what the governor says, if he comes out with something at our next meeting, which I know is Wednesday, uh, next Wednesday to have a discussion if we're gonna make any further modifications. What I don't wanna do is put the word out, we're gonna do whatever the governor says. We're doing what we think makes sense for Texas, uh, for Alpine, and we've documented it in our emergency ordinance.
Right, as long as we're in compliance.
Well, I- No, it's, hey, we are a home rule city.
Yeah, I know, I understand that.
Let's not forget that, okay?
Okay, no, I, I understand that. But, uh, okay. So the motion passed. Now, I'm gonna put my hat on as the emergency management coordinator. And I'm glad because we removed the, the have to wear the mask and that you'd be subject to a fine, uh, either the per, uh, person or the business. So we have removed that. But I am asking the public to, on their own, and, uh, this is, this is something that I feel we need to do. Let's respect our friends and neighbors. Okay? They, you know, there's some out there that have health, health issues again and that are at risk. So I want you to remember that. And, you know, it'll be up to you, you know, if you don't wanna do it and your neighbor gets ill or whatever because they associate it with you, then, you know, it'll be on you. But we, as a council, we instituted these ordinances. It wasn't to institute draconian law or anything like that. We were doing what we thought was best for our community. Nothing more. We weren't here to say, hey, we're dictators and this is, this is what you're gonna do, anything like that. We were here to protect our community. And whether it was right or wrong or indifferent, you know, we are modifying the ordinance. And I, I think that's what people were, were mainly concerned is that they did not wanna be mandated or forced to wear it. But it's gonna be up to you that you do wear it. And that's all I'm asking of, of our folks here in Alpine.
I agree with you, Mayor.
Sounds good.
Yes.
Okay, any more comments? Judge?
So I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
I, I am very disappointed we as council did not open up businesses.
What's that, sir?
We did not open up any businesses, and so we still have a community that's heavily based on tourism, that we have not enabled our small businesses to open up. That creates a financial burden for them, which I think is unfortunate.
Yeah, and, and I-
Well, hold on there. Well, hold on there. I think the second point is that when we see what the governor does relative to opening up tourism, I think we have to ask ourselves the question, how are we going to be able to respond when COVID shows up? Because removing of the mask takes away an opportunity, not about masking our residents, but no one from outside will wear a mask if we choose not to. I understand changes like this are a challenge. But in my view, masking up is all about, how do you get the outsiders to prevent them from infecting your city because we're not going to be able to test them? That's my point.
And I take your point. Yes, sir, Judge, you had a comment. Hello, Judge? I guess he dropped off. Okay, I guess he dropped off, he had a comment, city manager.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so we'll go over to the city council, comments and answers. And we'll start with Ms. Fitzgerald today.
I think this has been very interesting and very progressive today.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Curry.
Well, I'm glad we had the discussion, and I hope to see everybody wearing their masks, even though they're not mandated to.
Okay, Escobedo, please.
I hope that people respect other people and wear their masks. And this is a choice, so let's hope that becomes something that they keep in mind when they go out.
Okay, Ramon?
I agree with Councilman Escobedo and Councilman Curry that, yes, if not now mandatory, you wear a mask. But keep in mind, it's a good thing. But the idea is to be cautious, be safe for yourself, your loved ones, your neighbors, your friends, and everybody in our great community of Alpine. The other comment I'd like to make is that I've noticed on the chat section down below, there are 99 chat comments. I know we didn't share many of them, or I didn't see them on the screen. Is there a chance that Eric could send an email copy to all of us? I'm interested to see what people are talking about.
They do get saved as part of the meeting, Councilor Olivas, so they'll be available.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stevens.
So what if I were to make a motion to go to level two and leave masks on?
And leave masks on?
Yes.
Mandatory?
Yes.
It's not on the agenda?
I'm sorry, the agenda doesn't delineate specifically, it talks about our emergency ordinance.
Emergency ordinance, and that's what modified, I mean. Yeah, I guess you could make that motion, and, you know, hear me out real quick. It's going to hurt the small business that they're not going to be able to open. You know, a lot of mom and pops are going to shut down. And we depend on tourism and the, you know, sales tax and the hot money. So yes, that's going to hurt us. But this was what the, what folks were wanting. I received tons of calls yesterday. Again, today, I've been on the phone and answering as many emails as possible, and I only had one positive yesterday that was for the ordinance.
So Andy, that's your view, I had lots of positives, so I will make the formal motion. Go to tier two and include masks.
Mandatory?
Mandatory. Then council can decide if they want a second or not.
Okay, is there a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, and we'll open up for discussion.
So I have a question about the hotel. So it says in tier two that the hotels max 25% density of nonessential travelers, so that means that people from El Paso are going to be allowed, or whoever, from anywhere be able to come in, but they're going to be asked to wear a mask?
Yes.
That's the motion on the floor. And that's what's on tier two. Okay, anybody, any more comments?
I'd like to make a comment, Mayor. One, if the motion made is in essence to try to help in some way businesses in town, I think it's valid. The thing is, keep in mind that the Senate and the House has passed a tremendous bill with money-making money available via grants and via loans to small businesses. So it's out there, it's now up to businesses to look into those funds and hopefully apply. And hopefully, they will get their share of funds so they can survive this period that we're going through. Just keep that in mind.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Well, and I would just add on to Ramon's comment, that opportunity is out there. And I suspect probably 85% of the residents of Alpine just got a check for $1,200 each. And if they're a family of two, they got $24. And for every child, they got another $500. So there is cash in Alpine.
Yeah, and so to me, you know, I do think we need to move to tier two, but I'm still against the mandatory wearing of the mask. I think we should urge all our business community, the hotels, motels, to stress that to your visitors that are coming in. Because we're not going to be able to police anybody, you know, our police would be the mask patrol then. And they have other functions that we have to, that we have to take care of in the city. Okay? This tier, which was, to me, was an excellent tier. We can still use this in the future, it's not going to go away, but I think we can still use it in the future. Yeah, I, for one, wear my mask, gloves, and I have disin sanitizer in my vehicles. And this was before anything was mandatory. So I think as a whole, people will start, I see what, 99 folks, I think, were on the chat line? 96, there's participants. So it's up to you guys, you know, wear those masks. You know, I don't want to, as an EMC, I don't want to force anybody to wear them. But I would strongly urge that you do wear them. You know, and consider your, like I said earlier, your friends, your neighbors, your relatives on this issue. You know, it's like the helmet law that we had, Texas passed the helmet law back in the 80s, and then it got rescinded. And there's more people out now riding motorcycles wearing the helmets than ever before.
Well, and we have 3 million people who are smokers in the state of Texas, and we don't allow them in businesses either.
Right, but yet we don't prohibit them from smoking in other places.
Well, they can smoke all they want, they can, they'll wear a mask anywhere they're at, except in a public place.
Right, except in the public place, correct. So, so, okay, I'm going to call for the question.
Great.
Okay, all those in favor of moving to tier two and leaving the mandatory mask on there, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Please raise them so I can see them in the screen, I can't, okay, got one, two. Betty? What's that?
It says I voted the last time.
She wrote, she voted for, Mayor, it was two, two for, three against.
Okay.
Stevens and Fitzgerald for, Olivas, Escobedo, and Curry against.
Okay, against the motion. Okay, the motion fails.
Okay, thanks.
All ready, anything else? Seen any discussion, any comments from the city council?
Be safe.
See you next Wednesday.
Yes, see you Wednesday.
See you Wednesday.
Okay, well, thank you all very much. And I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Not debatable, most of the meetings adjourn. Thank you very much.